Today is January 24th and this is our monthly Board of Library Trustees meeting. Welcome, everybody. So our first item on the agenda is to review and act to approve the minutes of our December 20th meeting.
Okay, I did notice one thing, and it's that Nora, in the December 20 meeting, Nora is listed as present, but she's also listed as absent.
That's right.
Okay. Well, it just needs a correction.
So she was?
Was she here? She was one or the other.
She was here. She was here?
Yeah, she was.
Because she was here for the next one.
She was there with a jam curvy.
Oh, wasn't she? Yeah.
I think she wasn't, right? Wasn't that there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, she wasn't, she was absent.
Okay, so she just needs to be removed from the present.
Present. Sorry, I didn't catch you.
I didn't give it either a couple of that.
I always expect people to answer for themselves on that one.
You just want to see your face.
Anything else that needs modification?
I would move to approve with that noted correction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is to review and act to approve the minutes of the January 3rd meeting. Which was the special one that we had.
I'll reply.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is review and act to approve the report of the directors' activities of December 2022. Do you work? I saw that. She was on vacation.
She was on vacation.
Want to approve the director's report?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is to review the programs and services that were offered in December of 2022.
It's busy, as usual.
I know, that's what's going on.
Did anyone attend the author's two sisters back in? Sounds like it was an interesting program. Shrewsbury Sisters. They're not sisters, let me just correct myself.
Those look interesting.
Was that the same day as the open house? Like in the afternoon? No, because it was something else. Really a nice variety.
Really a variety, yeah. And I like the list of the non-library groups that use the library.
Yeah.
Boys' scouts, girls' scouts. I was wondering how the non-library groups will collect fees from some groups, don't we?
Only if they are nonprofits that are not based in Shrewsbury and not serving primarily Shrewsbury residents.
So it's a very, I would imagine it's a very small fraction of people who are there.
Yes, yes, very small fraction.
What are we charging?
$50 an hour.
I'm just curious, how many people show up for the Spanish Conversation Club?
On an average, I think four or five. There have been up to eight people. It's going on today, actually, upstairs. There were three people, and I happened to be there and these three loved the conversation.
Isn't that nice? Is that students or is it adults?
It does, it does. Yeah, it's a conversation club, so it's not like a class.
Is it primary Spanish speakers or?
No.
So people who?
Yeah. Want to speak. Who probably do speak Spanish, just want to improve, us improve their conversational skills.
I was in one of those focus groups and there was a lot of interest in the Spanish conversation circle and the people who were there.
So is it, I'm just curious, is it beginner Spanish, beginners or intermediate or advanced learners? Or is it?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
It might be more than beginners. I think beginners, then it would be more like they would need instruction. This is people who can speak and want to become fluent. That's my impression.
It's nice that you offered that.
The teacher is Father Jose from Saint Mary's. Anyone knows?
I know that, I know.
Yes.
Are there any other language speaking clubs like that, French or?
I think we used to have French a long time ago. The old building, George was there, I remember that time. We've had groups, French speaking groups for children. And it was called a conversation group. They used to converse in French. We've had Mandarin again in children's. Yeah, I would love to revive that.
So that's something that we could do again if people?
Yes, yes. Oh, there's definitely interest, because we have to find someone who can facilitate. Why did we start in the first place? Because the pandemic or different reasons, probably, I'm not sure. It was a very long time ago that we had.
Way before.
In the old building, yeah.
I wonder how we could invite someone from the community that might be willing to facilitate.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know how we would.
I mean, in the children's room, I think they can, you know, informally talk to patrons who come in when they see them speaking at different places.
Oh, right, right, yeah. Or even maybe in the next newsletter.
Sure.
Saying, you know, we like to, we have a Spanish Conversation Circle. We're looking to also expand it, you know? French, Arabic, you know, whatever. See if you can get anybody.
See, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it'd be good to hear from patrons to see what they would be interested in, if they are interested. All right, I don't think we have to vote on that one. So moving on to financial legislative review and act on the year-to-date report.
Jeff, the last meeting you had pointed out that there was an amount under training and conference that's been removed. That was for the, I told you, it was Mike's conference that he had gone to. And it was entered into this by mistake, so now it's going to be the town that pays for it.
That's nice.
They had said that, I think, when it was processed, it was a mistake.
What about the temporary funds that we talked about yesterday? That line item that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I checked with Peter and he's going to reach out to the town's accounting department. He thought it was the salaries of the seasonal aides. But that should not be a separate line item. And especially when the original appropriation is zero. Deb's talking about the third line under library salaries and wages. 01, 06, 1, 002, the third line there, salary and wages temporarily. Usually you don't have, so if it says original appropriation is zero, so how are we spending money?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are going to find out what that is.
Okay.
If it is the seasonal aides, it should, it should just be from the previous line, line item.
Yeah, for part-time, yeah.
Yes, yes. So we will find out.
Should we put you in much on track?
Everything else seems to be on track. There's another line item on the next page, dues and memberships, where we have overspent. That is also going to be changed to R&amp;M equipment. This is the reimbursement to the friends. Jeff, the 1,006 of 188 is the reimbursement to the friends. That should come from the R&amp;M equipment. That will also be reflected in the next one, as taken from a different line.
Oh, I see, that's not into dues in the future.
That, yes, yeah. Because in R&amp;M equipment, we list all these things, you know, the Adobe membership and the fees for all those different male chimp and all that. So it should come from that line item. We will get it corrected.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a more general question. Educational supplies that differs from?
Library supplies.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or library materials?
Oh, library materials is books and, you know, e-books, DVDs, all this, all this circulating stuff is materials. Educational supplies is what the children's librarians use for, you know, various things that they do.
Whereas library supplies might be book covers and stuff like that.
Catalog, yeah.
Cataloging and that kind of thing.
Processing stuff, yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
So for the total on the last page, are we 60.1% or 83.6%?
60.1%.
Okay. Because I thought 83.6% was not so good.
Yeah.
That's a good for half.
It's still your attitude. It's a good question, though. I wonder what the difference is.
Yeah, I don't want the total jumping in front of us.
Somebody want to make a motion to accept the year-to-date report as submitted and what explanations as to what might be changed for our next report?
I wonder if we knew that I'm sure we have children. Maybe the difference is in the encumbrances.
I was wondering if it was.
Is that it?
It could be.
Yeah.
I'll find out, I'll find out what it is.
60.1% or 83.6%?
Yeah, the salaries are covered, you should self-coke. Run out of money.
Now, that's a good question, because library operational expenses is only the 04.
Yeah.
So that is 60.1%. You know, the whole budget that is 01, 02, 03, 04, library operational expenses is 60.1%. But how come we spend 83.6% or something like that?
I think it has to include those encumbrances and everything else.
Even if it includes encumbrances, doesn't it seem like?
I think that makes the most sense, but maybe if you could get a good explanation.
I will find out.
I have a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Next item on the agenda is facility equipment and grounds, which we have something to talk about tonight.
Yes, elevator, yes, concerns. Elevators not working. That is a person came to look at it yesterday and he said some parts have been ordered, have to be ordered, and then once they get that, they would have to fix it. So it's going to take a little while. I'm hoping at least by Friday they'll be able to get it back running, so, yeah. That is a bit of a concern.
So what, so people who come and need it are just out of luck for a bit?
Yes, yes.
If they know what they need from upper downstairs.
We would be happy to think it to them.
But if they're browsing.
Right. And also, the family's going down with the struggles, carriages, babies and toddlers.
Yeah, tricky.
And the books that we have to move to the living floor, so.
Teachers' turnmaster.
Wow.
So it's a little hard to put a date on that.
Date, yes. That is a little, yeah, that is a little hard, but I'm hoping it will be done as soon as possible.
Can you would mention the heat is on the older part of the building?
The heat seems to be fluctuating, yes. Yesterday and today, we noticed that the heat in the old part of the building and the quiet room and Group Study Room D, it was cold. Again, I have mentioned it to the public facilities, they know about it.
Okay.
Is there any more information on custodial hours?
So we just sent an email to, Deb and I sent an email to the public facilities manager, and he has said he'd have a meeting with us to discuss it further.
I'm wondering if the subcommittee could get together to talk about some of these issues, both the heating issue, the custodial issue, which is a very time-consuming process. And also the lighting outside. I think that these are all priorities for, it has comfort and safety that we really need to address, so. I don't know, is you right, you're on it, and Nora, and, yeah, and, so maybe at some point could do that?
Definitely.
Just sort of we're all on the same page. Or maybe that one meeting with Keith will be enough to address it all. I think we all know what needs to be done. I was thinking, actually, coming in today, the walkway was nicely sanded, but I know John leaves at 3:30. What happened, I mean, what happens if, does staff go?
We still have to work, we have to do. Yes.
And all of that.
This is not right.
If we are, right. If we had been open yesterday, we did close, the library closed after 3 o'clock. If we had been open, we would have had to do it.
Does the town take responsibility?
The town does the parking lot, definitely. They take care of that, but not necessarily the walkway. Sometimes they might send someone, but we have to definitely go out and check frequently, especially near the handicaps parts and all that.
Because really, we're one of the few public buildings that are open until 9 o'clock. So maybe that's something that we could add on to our list to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, people are here until much later than they are other.
No, they do send someone if it's really bad.
Okay.
But we also are, you know, this person who's supervising will definitely go and make sure that it's not slippery.
All right, so I guess we'll let you know when that meeting is going to occur.
Sure.
When you think about people leaving at 8:30, 4:00 or 9:00, it's dark, it's getting cold, and it's.
Refreezing.
Yeah.
Don't want any slip and falls.
No, definitely not.
Okay, all right. Next is gifts and grants.
Okay, so we got the state aid first installment, it was $42,126.44. It's usually around $65,000 that we get during the year, but maybe we'll get a little more this time. This was the first installment.
And is it usually 50, you know, 50% and then 50%?
It's usually kind of like, not exactly 50%, but, yes. So I'm not sure how much we're getting next time. They don't even send a letter nowadays. I mean, they send an email, but before they used to, you know, give a.
Tell you exactly what was coming.
Exactly, yes. So they give, they, they send an email with all the towns in Massachusetts, you know, who's getting what. And then I checked with the accounting person whether we had received that amount. That's how I find out.
So, but do we know the total amount?
I don't know the total.
Wasn't that in the MPA, I think on this mailing list, a habit list of what towns were awarded.
That is the first installment. Yes, and they had done that in two installments, in the sense, some of the towns, you know, in the first email that they had sent.
Yeah.
And then later, some other towns.
Huh.
Yeah.
I think we can all be on that mailing list.
Yeah. No, I saw, but I thought that was the total amount when I didn't realize it was just that first.
It was confusing, especially since not all communities got it at once.
Right.
Exactly.
I didn't know where you stood.
So when does the second installment typically come?
And they don't follow the fiscal year either, so I'm very confused about whether it is the calendar year or the fiscal year, or we consider this, you know, for '22, '23. Yeah, I've asked that question, but I've not gotten the right answers.
Curious.
But we didn't receive this.
We get the money, that's important.
We need the money.
We don't know when, we don't know how much, but we guess.
We get the money.
Well, thank you for doing all the paperwork to make sure.
Yes. You're welcome. And then we received a donation from the Turkey Truck Committee again for the memory cafe, $2,000. It was very generous of them.
That's nice.
Thank you to them. And what else did we get this time? Oh, the ARPA funding. I still haven't gotten the official letter, but I was told that I can mention it later. So it's $100,000 for new technology.
That's great.
For the nitrogen. That's the ARPA funds, which has to be spent by the end of 2024.
End of 2024, so we have time.
Yes.
But this is, we already have a plan on this.
Oh, absolutely.
3D printers and all that.
Always.
So we got.
It'll be no more than going to be.
All right, next is personnel.
Personnel, I don't think there's anything here.
This probably doesn't come under personnel, but what's the status of the English Conversation Facilitator?
Oh, that's a good question. So we have a person who is facilitating one of the classes that Christina was doing. This is entirely on Zoom for a temporary period. She's going to do it for three months.
Okay.
She's not charging any fee, someone that just knows. And then we have interviewed two potential volunteers who are willing to do the, you know, the big picture kind of thing for the English Conversation Circle. One of them was, she said she could do either Zoom or in-person classes, and she has experience teaching literacy volunteers in other towns. And the other person was comfortable only in doing the teaching in an in-person class. So she came and observed the Wednesday class with Lee Hench, and we just have to decide what we want to do now going forward, whether we wanted to continue on Zoom or whether we want an additional in-person, in-person class. And the last class, the Wednesday, this past week, we didn't have classes because Martin Luther came day. But before that, the previous week, there were about 20 people in the class.
Oh, wonderful.
I don't know how suddenly people seem to have become aware of what's going on, because we used to have 10 to 12 max, but 20 people, which is wonderful, but also difficult to manage in, you know, if everyone needs a chance to speak, it's difficult to do that in one hour, so.
Was that on Zoom?
No, it was in person. They just kept coming and we had to get more chairs, because both the meeting rooms were being used that day for something else.
It's kind of a nice problem, but still.
Yes, yes. So maybe it's time to start another in-person class. We just have to find the right.
Can we find us the times, the days and times of them again?
Right now, yes. So there are two Zoom classes, Tuesday afternoons, 4 to 5, and Saturday morning, 10 to 11. And the in-person class is on Wednesdays at 10:30 in the library. And there's one at St. Anne's on Friday mornings at 10:00.
So we have four?
We do have four, two in-person and two Zoom. Maybe we start another one. I thought we could do an informal survey of all those people who came, ask them what other day and time would be convenient, and then reach out back to those potential volunteers.
Do they have to pre-register, or is that?
We don't, we used to take registration. We just, I mean, if people call and ask, we take their names, but otherwise it's, they can just come in. For the Zoom, of course, we need to know, because we need their email and all that.
Yeah.
But for the in-person class, everyone's welcome.
Who facilitates that scene?
St. Anne's, this person named Kathleen Goodman. She has been doing it for many years.
That's one of the.
Right, yeah, I mean, two years during the pandemic, we did not, but then it's back again. Back again now for the past year.
And just under personnel as well, thank you everyone, everyone for filling out the director's evaluation. And I think we're on track to have our public praise of you next month. So the personnel committee will meet before then with you. So that's one way. Okay, next is the Shrewsbury Public Library Foundation.
We just had a meeting yesterday just to sort of assess the annual appeal letter that went out in December, late in December, with similar results to our, to last year's efforts. And we still are discussing doing a town-wide mailing to every household. We need a little more time and input on how to go about doing that. And we also feel pretty strongly that it would benefit the foundation greatly if we had a consultant to help us organize. And we discussed the possibility of having the consultant from Sage that's been doing the strategic plan for the library. So more on that as we explore that further.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Friends of the Library.
Well, as you probably know, the Friends bookstore got a lot of press.
Yes, it did, nice photo.
That's great.
I don't think so, but the Spectrum News had a short video, and the TNG actually had it in the print newspaper, and then the online, or online. and the TNG actually had a different newspaper and the online, or online version of it, which has brought people to the library, to the bookstore. So very happy about that. As the bookstore is open now, all hours of the, when the library is open, except the last hour in the evening. And even if there's no volunteer in the bookstore, people can just go browse, pick up the books that they want and put the money in the cash box there. So.
Does it seem like it's been working?
It has been working then.
And children's books are particularly in demand there.
Yes.
That's good to know in terms of donations, you know, just in terms of making sure that it's stocked.
Yeah, we could use more children's books donations for sure. But they're very popular.
Yes.
Those are the kinds I could be. They do. And also they can be certainly passed on, you know, once you've read it a dozen times.
In one day.
In one day.
That's been a fun thing to see for all...
Yes, it is.
All right, anything new with policies?
No.
And miscellaneous, we have a couple of things. One is an update on the strategic planning process.
Yes, so Barbara, the facilitator, facilitated two focus groups with 10 individuals in each of the, each of the groups. And there's going to be a third focus group this Saturday morning at 10:30. And a teen focus group, which was supposed to happen yesterday, but because of the snow, we, that's been postponed. I think it's going to be rescheduled for next week. So we'll have input from, you know, different individuals in the community.
Were they people that volunteered or did staff reach out to?
To the different people. Oops, I reached out to them, yeah. They had, you know, when we had sent out the survey, there was a question in that saying, do you want to participate in one's focused group? So we got a lot of responses. And from that, I picked names and I sent emails to them and invited them to join the focus.
It seems like there was a really good cross-section of the community represented in those groups. So it's good.
Yeah.
It sounds like a silly question, but there are people there that aren't normal library users because it seems like that would be a helpful perspective. I know that sounds silly and how would you reach out to them if they're not a library user? But like sort of like, how could we make it more convenient or how could we publicize? Especially if we're going to bring on a marketing person.
We always want to target non-users.
So I don't know how we find, I'll get that one.
Claire, weren't you on the last one that they did with me? And there were people that said, oh, I haven't been to the library in a really long time. I can remember that, those comments. So, you know, that, yeah. Exactly. Because you could actually do the whole thing electronically because the survey was available electronically. If you just do eBooks, you might never come to the library.
That's right. Right. Or people who used to come with kids and then they outgrew, you know.
Right.
But it just would be interesting to hear, like, how could we...
Does she, does Barbara update you periodically?
Absolutely, yeah, we have lots of meetings.
Yeah. Is she getting good information, do you think?
Yes, yes. She is, she said she is. So the third focus group's on Saturday, then I have a meeting with her on Monday.
Okay, so you'll get more?
Yes.
More, oh, great. And lastly, under miscellaneous is the proposed next steps with a land acknowledgement statement.
Yes, so I spoke with Kristen first and shared with her the research that we've done and the statement that we had developed. And, you know, Deb had expressed interest that we should share it with the town. So anyway, Kristen, I did talk to Kristen and then followed up with an email to Kevin and shared it with him. And he thought that, you know, it should be a town-wide proposal and that we should get input from more people. So he suggested that we reach out to the DEIV committee, the newly formed DEIV committee, and that they take a look at it, maybe review it and then come up with a proposal to the, then they can present to the select board.
That was... Thoughts about that? Does that sound reasonable? Make it more of a town-wide?
Right.
Not just the library.
It should be a town-wide.
Yeah.
Especially like if the library has one, not one else.
The library is on town property.
That's true.
Yeah, and I found out about other libraries that have the statement. And I saw that Chemsford, the town of Chemsford has a very comprehensive, not just a statement, but, you know, lots of resources to learn more about Native Americans and to find out about collections and all kinds of things. So very exhaustive, comprehensive report on their, the town of Chemsford's website. And then there are quite a few libraries that have it on their own, too. We don't know whether they worked with their town or whether they developed it. So I presented all that also to Kevin. And we will be presenting it to the DEIV committee.
I think their next meeting is in February 15 or something like that. Do you envision that will be the time that we present it or just...
I think that it'll be too early. Maybe they have to read all the stuff.
Yeah, maybe the following.
We'll see.
We'll see what happens. Okay.
Any, any update on the Friday afternoons?
You were there the last Friday afternoon.
Right, right.
I wasn't.
I mean, are you getting, did you get some sign-ups from trustees to...
Yeah, yeah, I think we're pretty well set for the next month or so. But I ask people to review it every now and then and put your name in if you can do it. So I guess it's pretty well covered.
So when we come, you just sort of...
Yeah, just, I just hang out in that, at the beginning of the order. And if anyone looks like they're middle-aged students and they're not going, taking that right, stare them that way. It's a good, it's a good vantage point. Because you can also look outside and see what's going on outside. But when I've been there, they've been...
Yes.
And there's a big sign right there by the, by the Friends book sale bookcase that, you know, says, yeah, appropriate behavior. And I think it's got an arrow. So, you know, it's just basically just saying, hi, kids, welcome, welcome.
And most of them know.
They do, they do, yeah. They have activities now for them, too.
They do.
Are they popular?
Yeah, every, yes, they are. It's just their attention span. There might be a movie going on for an hour, but they're in and out. Some of them play video games, so they stay longer than the movie go and movie watches.
It's fun to watch them. Have a good time. It's nice.
Okay, anything else to come up tonight?
I don't think so.
I have a quick question about, I always love the statistics flyers. I know we all, we all love those.
Yes.
Would it be possible to keep including the number of new library cards issued?
We do that every time, I think.
It used to be like in a little separate section and I didn't see it on here and I might have just missed it.
Now it says one, the first line, welcome so many visitors.
Oh, I went to that. Okay, gotcha, thank you.
And they've started adding this, how many 3D print requests at the bottom because that's... Yeah, so that's an interesting figure to get. Yeah.
You know, it used to be at the meetings that we had a particular trustee who would read these statistics at every meeting. And it was nice because it conveyed to the community how much is going up. For example, there were 22,356 visitors in the month of December and 135 new patrons, you know, and 25,000 loans and, you know, eBooks and so...
You should read it all. For people to know how...
We loaned 6,495 eBooks or e-audio books to patrons. 2,600 items came from other libraries through the interlibrary loan system. 79 adult, teen, and children's programs with 2,200 people in attendance at those programs delivered 600 items through our outreach service. 662 computer sessions and accommodated 342 study room reservations. So those rooms are being used. And over 100 free or discount passes to area museums. And the fulfilled 34 3D print requests. So, yeah.
I mean, it's a lot to be proud of.
That's a slow month.
And that's a slow month, that's December. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, so we'll start doing that again.
I think we should. I think that's a really good idea. We really do. Why should we just get to seeing these?
Yeah.
Because that's great.
Does it get posted in your own, on the bulletin board?
Yeah, that's great.
And they're fun to look at now, too, with all the...
Yeah, it's a grab.
Okay, unless there's something else that we need to talk about. Our next meeting is February 28. I guess we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.